Additions? Mr. Cutler? Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler that the agenda be accepted as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Adoption of minutes, regular minute, meeting minutes from January 13th? Questions, concerns? Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross that the regular meeting minutes of January 13th, 2025 be accepted as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Delegations? We have two. Abe?
Yeah, so we have Garth Stotts with the Range Gravel Experience, who is coming up first, and he is in attendance via Zoom conference call. Garth?
Yeah, hi. Good evening. Yeah, thanks for this. I'm a little under the weather, so hopefully you can hear me okay? Am I on?
I can hear you. Just one second.
More?
Can you turn the volume up there? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so yeah, this is the, I would say maybe almost annual item that I've had on council's agenda every January for the last few years. So some of you I'm sure I've presented to before. But yeah, the Range is a gravel site green event in July. This year would be year number five. Again, it's the third weekend in July. We've kind of solidified ourselves as that, as that weekend, so it's July 19th, 2025. And the riders start and finish in the Clare's Home Centennial Park, which we're asking for approval to do that again this year, as well as also approving if we decide to have it, I guess, our community beer gardens, which was put on by the community park or the skate park association last year as well. And, and then also there's a lot of, I mean, not that the event, the event does kind of go through the campground, so the town and, and rec services and the campground are, have been really gracious hosts to this event, and it really fits well with everything we're trying to do. And, and yeah, that's basically, it's no, no real changes. From, from last year, we've added an extra long distance this year, which will extend the day for the riders who choose to go on it. It'll make it more of a 12-hour day versus an eight-hour day. This is what they want, so there's a, there's an extra, extra long route out there for them this year. And the range is also kind of growing. It's become part of the Trans Rockies Race Series, which is a prominent event series organization in Alberta, which does basically, you know, events in Alberta and DC and also in the States. And it's also part of the Earth Gravel Series, which is a, I would call it a collection of international destination gravel races, where people race at these races, and then they collect points, and then there's like overall winners and stuff. To be honest, I don't know too much about it, other than that we're in it this year. But anyway, it's gaining a lot of attention. I think it's great for your guys' community. Those international races are all over the world. There's ones in Africa, there's ones in Iceland, in Europe, so it's really nice to have this race in that community too as well. And I think with the Trans Rockies Race Series and the gravel Earth Series, you know, it just brings, it'll bring a whole nother demographic of international riders to the, to the event. So yeah, that's the, that's the goal. We're looking at capping it at 500 riders this year. We had 300 riders last, well, we had 300 registrations last year, but we had about 20% no-shows, and that's kind of typical. So we had about 240 racers out on course, so we'd expect kind of selling 500, but having similar number of no-shows too as well. So that's the, I've kind of passed around a little bit of an agenda on, on the, kind of a draft info pack, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have too as well.
Thank you, Garth. Any questions? Is there anything else the town could do to support you, Garth?
I think you guys do a lot, to be honest. You know, you give use of the Centennial Park, which is a nice grass green space for us. I think the public works, I believe, was, you know, helped basically give us some no parking signs and communicated with the schools to let people park at the schools, which really helps, I think, the community on the parking side. It's a lot of cars to handle as people come in, and no matter how, how well you tell the riders to park where you want them to park, that does not, they don't always listen to you. Your bylaw officer, Brian, also helps us with just the neutral rollout in the morning, so that's really helpful. And yeah, the campground, we reserve some for the volunteers, which is also super helpful for us. But yeah, if there's anything you want to get involved in, I'm always open to ideas too as well. And it's, you know, it's really an event for, for you guys as much as it is for the riders and for people who are coming in out of town. And I think, you know, having more local, local people, I know there's some good locals that ride in it, and maybe some locals that come out and cheer on, but yeah, as much as, as much as we want to make it a festival or something to do or something to check out in, in Clare's Home, I think that would be great, and I think we'd be really supportive of all those kind of things. It's always nice for the community to, to, to get behind it. And, and yeah, but if, if those things are available, I'm happy to hear options and opportunities for those too as well. I, we don't really require anything, like we don't require, you know, any funding or anything like that, just permissions, and, and really help, are, are really happy that Clare's Home is a very, you know, accepting community for this kind of thing, because not, not all communities are, to be honest. They don't want the, the traffic in that thing on, on one day a year and whatnot, so, so really happy that Clare's Home is open to that.
Thank you. We appreciate your event in Clare's Home. I'd like to see more marketing done on this event on our end. So if you were okay with that?
Yeah, sure. What would you, do you want me to provide you with some, with some material? And how could we, we can always do cross coordination on social media, like Instagram feeds and those kind of things. We can collaborate on those. But we're open, I'm open to any other ideas too as well, for sure. Yeah, I think it would be, I think probably that has been missing, probably, I mean, I'm not, I'm in Calgary, so I'm not in Clare's Home, but I don't know how many people really know it, but that it's coming before the event essentially.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's a good point. So however we can get that message out, whatever channels the community is most used to, I guess I should say, is happy to, happy to work with those channels, for sure.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you. Take care, Garth.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it. Bye.
Next?
Yeah, we have Scott Alexander with DECOM Energy, and he is going to be talking about a possible solar project in the community.
Thank you. Thanks, Abe and administration, and thanks to council for inviting me here today. We did visit this about five years ago. There were a few projects looked at. One was at the water treatment plant, which was substantially larger than this. And if I recall correctly, the reason for not going forward was there was a contract in place, and it would have been a little cost prohibitive to get out of the contract. So this is kind of what the roof of the Clare's Home Arena would look like, approximately 85% covered in solar panels. We've looked at the roof structure. It is viable. The, the electrical service on site is also viable, so there are no real additional costs there, other than an engineer's report to say that the roof is viable to carry the load. The main reason for, the main reason most municipalities are going solar is cost surety. Of course, twice a year, you have to revisit budgets, and sometimes you just don't know exactly what things are going to turn out to be. Sometimes you get some surprises. Contract comes up for your power, and all of a sudden it goes up 30%. If you have solar on, on a building, that building is assuming, you know, 50 to 70% of its power from the solar. You're paying for the solar already. We know how much power the solar is going to produce. So if the rate goes up 30%, and you're using 50% of the power from the solar, that rate effectively is 15% for that facility. Right? So, so you get to hedge against inflation, and then you get to save some of the transmission and distribution charges as well. So what we're looking at here is an actual facility in the village of Warner. It's approximately half the consumption and half of the solar that we have planned for the arena here in Clare's Home. So this was the numbers month by month for 2020, and that was, they had solar, but they did not have the solar club rate. So that was a new thing at that time. The solar club rate works really well on arenas and seasonal use or seasonal consumption facilities, just like it works really great on pivots, irrigation pivots, because they're shut down all winter. The reverse is true for arenas, because the plants shut down all summer. So you do still have a bill in the summer, as you can see, but their consumption is significantly less in the summer than it is in the winter, whereas with solar, you're producing significantly more in the summer when the plant is turned off. So if we look at the numbers, with solar and without the solar club, it costs them just about $4,000 a year. The year before that, or two years before that, price was, the price of a kilowatt hour was about three cents, and here they were paying six and a half. And it cost them $29,000 to run that facility just for power with kilowatt hours, transmission, distribution charges. It was $29,000, and power was three cents. So that's a significant difference. Then when we go to the solar club, now, again, these are actual numbers. The overall savings is $24,000 after they paid their lease payments of $13,3950 every month, which was $16,000 for the year. And that lease is on the solar system. It's an old program that NMAX offered, which those of you that are still in council from the last term may recall. So cost surety, you're hedging against inflation, and with the solar club, now you can actually make money with solar. So our company was, was born in 2001. We started it out doing low voltage data cabling and electrical, things like that. And then in 2011, our owner pivoted and paired with NMAX and started doing solar. So as a company, DECOM Energy Solutions has been doing solar effectively for almost 14 years, it'll be 14 years, I think, in two months. So we've worked with a lot of different municipalities, corporations, and farmers across southern Alberta, in Calgary as well. We've worked with McGrath, Raymond, Clare's, Sterling, Warner, Cardston, Lethbridge County. We did their building, administration building downtown, various schools as well. So we're a reputable company, we're bondable, we have all the safety certification in place. So now the system that I've designed for your arena is 280 kilowatts DC, so that's how much each and every individual panel adds up to in total. That will produce about 270 megawatt hours a year. Your total consumption there on that building is about 315,000, so it's about 80, 75, 80%. It's also the largest that we can put on that building and still connect under the limit to be small microgeneration, which means you can benefit from the solar club. Anything over 150 kilowatts AC power, you can't qualify for those. So then you're on the pool, and you're playing the market essentially with your commodity. Whereas if you're under 150 kilowatts AC, you can benefit from the solar club and effectively make money. So punching in all the numbers from the 2024 electrical costs at the facility, it come with the cost, balanced with the cost of the system, the internal rate of return is 24%. Your effective levelized cost of electricity generated is 4.6 cents per kilowatt hour. I think you're contracted at 7.11 currently. So that means that all the power that this solar system will produce in its lifetime will effectively cost you 4.6 cents throughout the whole lifetime of the project, the whole lifetime of the system, which gives a net present value of $1.25 million. The total payments would be $513,498. There are incentives through the Municipal Climate Change Action Center. They have a municipal electricity generation program on right now. There is still funding available. It's 70 cents per watt or 30% of the total capital cost, without taxes, of course. There also is a bonus 20 cents per watt that's over and above that 30%, which would be an additional, I think it's $56,100 on top of this, $154,000 that they would give you for the capital cost of the project. So about $211,000 total would be the funding out of the $513,000. So that's a good deal. Sets effectively 40%, right? So this is the projected payoff with all the numbers put in. It's just shy of five years, which is a pretty good return. The average investment for anybody who invests in stocks and the like, the average return is eight years. So this, what I would say is above average. And here you have, like I said, you would be about 80% covered with the power generation as planned currently. So you would be buying a little bit of power, but the bulk of it would be covered off. And this is what the, the blue is in consumption. That's how much power the arena uses per month for 2024. So this is recent data, and this is what the projected production would look like. So all of this power over and above, once you turn the plant off at the end of March, you're exporting all this power at 30 cents a kilowatt. And the current contract on the solar club to buy that power back in the wintertime is nine cents. So it's a 21-cent differential. And it's the same amount of power, right? So you're exporting it at 30 cents, and you buy it back six months later at nine cents. Makes sense so far? Again, these are the rebates and incentives. So it's under 150 kilowatts, it's 70 cents a watt, or 150 kilowatts, two megawatts, it's 55 cents a watt. And again, they cap that at 30%. So it's either or, whichever is the lesser of the two. And then over and above that, you get the first-time applicant bonus at 20 cents a watt, which is effectively about $56,000. So these are approximately what the current electricity bills look like. Jennifer and Abe and I went through these. I got them a little closer. I think you were at $84,000 for the year last year. I adjusted our rates, and I got us pretty close, and I just couldn't get it bang on. But, so this would be what you would consider a conservative estimate of what your bill was last year for that facility. And then this is what the electricity bill would look like potentially with solar on it. And you can see all these red numbers. These are all the credited kilowatt hours for that exported power that I showed you on the bar graph. And this is the translation into dollars that would be put back into the bank account of the town for these months. So the effective savings would be about $76,000 a year. And this is what your cash flow looks like. Of course, I don't have that $56,020 per watt bonus factored in here, because at the time I wasn't sure if the town had utilized the MCCAC before or not. So now I do know that you do qualify, because we had that meeting last week. So yeah, you can see in year one, you're upfront. That's effectively what you would be paying minus the $56,000, so about $300,000. And then your cash flow every year and every year forward. So at the end of 30 years, it would pay back 3.1 million, so you'd put out 300,000 and get pretty much 10 times back at the end of 30 years. And then, of course, if you have Greenhouse Goals, of course, that helps with that as well, because you're offsetting natural gas use. Any questions?
Counselor Cutler? Thanks for the presentation, Scott. So upkeep maintenance?
We say your budget about one cent per kilowatt per year.
But that's not factored into any of the numbers that were presented tonight, right?
It is, actually.
It is?
It is in the cash flow, yeah. So you can see here, this is the cost of a new inverter projected at year 16. So the warranty on the inverters is 15 years.
Okay.
Okay, so we factor that in, so we give you kind of a base, worst-case scenario sort of thing, right? So if you did have to replace the inverter at 15 years or year 16, there it is.
And our other maintenance, it's not like, what's the cost of a yearly maintenance on a package like this?
Basically, every year you just send somebody up there, make sure that everything's torqued, that none of the bolts are rattling around, and no, no solar panels are going to fly off. See if you can tell if anything's broken. You can pay us a couple hundred dollars to come out from Lethbridge to do that, or we can offer an O&M contract. It's, there are no moving parts. That's the beautiful thing about solar.
Right.
When you have moving parts, you, you always have maintenance, right? You have upkeep at the very least.
So I'm not a very solar panel kind of guy, but hailstorm comes in, blows up a bunch of panels?
It does happen, but it's very rare. The main reason for that is hail doesn't usually come straight down. Your roof up there is at about a 12% angle, a 12-degree angle, pardon me. So when hail lands, it doesn't generally land straight down. It does happen. So we don't lose very many solar panels to hail.
Would that be covered under insurance on the building?
You would definitely add it to your insurance, yes.
Does that increase our cost of insurance?
It will, and I can't tell you how much. That's something for your insurance broker. I would definitely look into that. You know, Abe has all the values.
And having said that insurance would cover it, we are starting to see insurance companies not cover hail, at least residentially, so that's maybe something we want to look into with our provider and get an answer from them on that.
Yep, that's something I would suggest, for sure.
Counselor Kettles?
I made it zoned out when you were talking to the solar club. Can you revisit that whole idea for me, what that's called?
Sure. Okay, so the retailers that offer the solar club rate, they, they buy bulk power, of course, and they turn around and sell it at a marked up price to you. But there are a lot of consumers that want to green their energy, and so they can pay extra on their electricity bill for that. And there's also the provincial tier program that those, that those people offset as well. So there's, there's some backroom accounting that I don't quite understand 100% because I'm not an electricity retailer, but I do know that they make the money, they make money off of giving you the 30 cents a kilowatt hour for the export. So if you look at the screen again on the arena, when you shut down the plant in the third or fourth, fourth week of March, that's when you're starting to produce your most. So administration would log into their account for the electricity provider and switch their rate, because you'd be a member of the solar club, and it would only offer you two rates, high rate and low rate. So for your high rate for the arena, you would be exporting power at the end of March, so that's when you would switch to your high rate, so you can get the best return for your commodity and for your export. Okay? And then in September, when you turn the plant on again, and log into the website and select the low rate, and then you effectively pay nine cents a kilowatt hour for all the power that you buy while the plant is running during the hockey season.
So we're buying it from the solar club as opposed to commercially?
Right. So instead of buying blocks of power through TransAlta and being locked into a contract and getting penalized if you don't use enough or if you use too much, if you look on your bills, you'll see, because you buy blocks, you have to use exactly that amount of power, and if you don't use exactly that amount of power, then they have to sell it for you. Of course, they sell it for you, whatever the market price is. If it's higher today than what your contract is, then hey, everybody's happy, because TransAlta makes money and you make money. But if it's lower, and they have to sell it for you, well, then you have to pay.
TransAlta still makes the money. Does that jive with what you're seeing administratively, Abe? Like from your electricity charges and, and how, you know, your town of Clare's Home is a commercial customer, so you're not as familiar with all of that, but...
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to just review our contract with them, but it does, it does generally jive, yes.
Okay. And outside questions around maintenance, and I, thanks, Mike. I think that's pretty just, pretty much my thought on that. Is there any option or desire or need to consider battery storage on any of this stuff?
The size of batteries that you would read, need right now, I think are almost at parity. So the cost and the benefit are almost equal currently. So, you know, we've, we've run analyses on these just about every year for the last five or six years, and it just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense for, especially for an arena, to have a battery backup. And the main reason is, is when you're using the most power, you're not producing enough to charge the batteries. So, you know, it's minimal. The benefit would be minimal. So I would say, you know, to pay a lot of money for a battery and to really not be able to use it when you need it most, I think just wouldn't make sense at this point. And then generally, in most situations, unless you're talking about really big batteries, like for the water treatment plant, that payback is just about at the time that the battery's warranty expires. So it's almost at parity, you know? So if you give it another two or three years, battery prices have come down significantly the last two, three years, you know, it might be something to look at again in another couple of years.
So, so say we were 10, 10 years into this, and technology had marched on, that would still be an option to?
Oh, absolutely.
Wire that into the system and figure that through?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. My, my other question was, you've done a lot of, a lot of panels and commercials and stuff and other, I see that. That's great. Notice you're using a well-known Chinese manufacturer, but Chinese nonetheless. Have, have you other options? Have you used other equipment?
Much more expensive.
How did you come to these guys and settle in as the, as the product that you want to promote?
It's kind of by attrition, actually. LG was my favorite solar panel manufacturer. They sourced and manufactured their own products through their LG Electronics branch. They were the largest in the world, but Longyi, the Chinese manufacturer that we're looking at today, was at the time, two years ago, they were pretty much making all of the silicon wafers for almost every other manufacturer. So basically, it was a Longyi wafer in any panel that you bought besides LG. Well, LG decided they didn't want to be in the solar game anymore, because they were bucking the winds really hard. You know, Longyi makes millions and millions of solar panels every year. They have factory in India, they have a factory in Georgia in the US, they have factories in China. You know, there are other Chinese manufacturers available, but it's almost the same product. It really is. There's almost no way around it, no.
And you've used this product already on a couple of installs, or?
Yeah, so we're doing a 4.5-megawatt project in Cardston right now. It's due to be energized here any day, and that is all Longyi. All of our commercial installations in the last year and a half have all been Longyi. We haven't had any issues. And in order to get in the country, they have to be certified that they're not using the Yagir slave labor. So there, and they have had, Canada Customs Border inspections have held So there, and they have had, Canada Customs Border inspections have held containers at the border until they could get the proper paperwork, well, not at the border, but import in Vancouver, for weeks, until they could get the paperwork together to certify that they were slave-free.
Do you, do you source wholesale directly offshore, or is it coming from that plant in the States, or however the supplier?
And the short answer is everywhere. So we had the ability last year to buy almost ten thousand solar panels because we had that many sold. Well, not quite, we had probably eighty percent of them sold. So when you buy bulk like that, you get a really good deal, containers and containers and containers. So we had a warehouse in Calgary and a warehouse in Lethbridge full of solar panels. And in order to pull that order together, they brought some out of the States, and at the time, there was still tariffs, so they waylaid them to Vancouver. We had some come from India, and we had some come from Europe, and we had some come from China. So eventually, they all come, it all goes back to the Chinese bank anyways, right? And we all...
It, it does, but you're, you're working directly with more or less a manufacturer, you're, you're got enough volume that you're not really working through a distributor.
Right. Yeah, so, and, and that's a problem with, with smaller businesses that are trying to get going, because they have to buy per job, because they can't, they can't put the money out to, to, to get that many for, to get the deal, right? So we do what they call bridge deals. So we'll, we'll work with the wholesaler and the manufacturer, so the wholesaler gets to handle them and they get a piece, but they don't get the whole piece because they don't store them, they don't have to bankroll them, all those things. So we get that discount and we get to carry that on to our customers.
Okay. Thanks, Mary, that's all I have.
Counselor Meister.
So when you hook up the system, it's only usable for the arena, there's no way to export it to another municipal building, like maybe a block away or something like that in the off-season?
Well, we would have, we would have to build a larger system.
Okay.
So let's say, let's take your biggest electrical consumer here in town is the water treatment plant.
Well, right now, I'm actually thinking of the museum, which kind of is open opposite of the arena, and it's literally a block away, so...
And it has a new roof.
It has, not yet, it doesn't.
Oh, not yet, okay. Well, I knew I read that somewhere. But it's got a nice parking lot for carports, too.
That's where we make our money when we sell it on the, right? When we sell it for ninety cents, we buy it back for ninety cents, right?
I guess, but it saves us some little money as well, so I just...
Yeah, no, I mean, this building would be great for it as well. I've, I've, in our software, I've designed multiple systems for this town many times. And, yeah, after we came back from AB Munis, I think it was, I stopped by here and I took some pictures and then I did a design, so...
So basically, not transportable, it has, each building has to have its own setup?
Through the microchip rules, you can do what's called aggregate sites, but what you have to be able to do is you have to be able to produce enough power for the other sites, right? So, yes, you could theoretically aggregate the museum in the summertime, but it would take away, I mean, even though it's the same pocket, but you would have to take the museum off of your contract with TransAlta as well. And then you'd be missing out on power for the arena, right? So you'd still be short in that equation. So if you could, you know, cover the parking lot at the arena with carports and oversize it so it produced more power than the arena needed, then you could put the museum and other buildings and facilities on the aggregated list, and then you could essentially export that power from one building to the other.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Got you.
Counselor Kettler?
It's coming to me, I had a question.
How much is this going to cost us, Scott?
Yeah.
Oh, there's that.
Well, there's, there's two numbers up there, that's what I was going to ask. So there's two numbers up there, the five forty-nine or whatever, then minus, that's what we pay up front, and then if we get some money back through the grants, am we down at three twenty?
No, so, well, close, five, what was it, five thirteen, I think it was?
Yeah.
Five hundred and thirteen thousand, and then you'd get approximately two hundred and eleven thousand dollars in rebates from the MCCAC. So you'd be looking at three hundred and two-ish thousand. Okay, now, we could also carry the rebate. Normally, we would bill you seventy-five percent until it's energized, but that would be over and above what the rebate would cover, so we could bill you essentially sixty-six percent. And then you could sign the paper so that the rebate comes directly to us, and then you wouldn't have to borrow that money or put it out for any length of time to cover the installation. Does that make sense?
That sounded complicated. Well, if...
All I know is the bill got paid at the end.
If, if we, if we don't do that, Mike, what ends up happening is, is the town has to put out the money to pay us for the services and the equipment and the installation, right? And then you have to wait three weeks or a month to get the money back from the MCCAC. And in that time, you would incur, of course, the administrative costs of doing that, plus, of course, you would probably have to borrow the money to do that, or put out the town's money and put something else on hold in order to do that. So we can just cut that all out, you only pay us the three hundred and something thousand dollars, and then the rebate comes to us, and Abe and I work on that, and we file the paperwork, so the MCCAC gives us the money, so you, the town doesn't have to. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so really, one option is we, we pay up the three fifteen, and you guys wait for the two hundred and eleven to come back from the C, from the, from the grants.
Yes, yes. And, and there aren't a lot of installers that can do that for you, but we can do that for you.
Or you can just wait till we start selling it at thirty cents a kilowatt, you just take your payments off of that. Like, there's other options, right?
Well, then, then we might have to meet you in the back alley after the meeting. We're not that kind of company.
But if we get it installed, it'll be high season for selling anyways.
Right?
Yeah. Don't want to miss out on the summer.
Just, just a preemptive answer here, because I know the last time that we had looked at this, one of the sticking points was the current power contract that you had in place, okay, and the cost to get out of that contract. We've had other municipalities and commercial clients get out of these contracts in the past, and they range anywhere from five hundred bucks to twenty-five-hundred a year, depending on how much power they have to take back and, and sell for you, right? TransAlta generally wants to carry that contract and leave it open, but you can force them because you're still buying two gigawatts of power from them. You can force them to terminate the contract and pay them. By the time this system would be installed, I believe you're, at the end of 2026, if I'm not mistaken, is when the contract runs out, so you'd only have a year. So it'd probably cost you a couple grand to get out of that contract for the arena. And of course, you'd be leaving everything else with them, so there's an opportunity there where some of those other facilities would take up some of that power anyways. Now, and you're talking about fifty-five thousand dollars export on the solar club between March and September, so a couple thousand dollars to get out of the contract is negligible.
Just throw us a couple more numbers out there, eh? Yeah, I mean, solar's a future, right? I mean, it's worked good down south, but...
Well, we are the sunniest part of Canada, and we have the best solar insulation in the country, right here in southern Alberta. That's why you're literally surrounded by solar panels. You know that, I mean, probably eighty to ninety percent of, of all the power consumed in southern Alberta comes from renewable resources.
Is there a shortage of electricity in southern Alberta, Scott?
Not to my knowledge, okay.
There's no question about getting the grant money?
Well, sorry, go ahead, Abe.
There's a, there is a pot of money, Scott, you can correct me if I'm wrong in this, there is a pot of money. I think it was sixty percent subscribed, and so it, and I think they figured there's a bunch of applications in the queue, which probably brings it up to seventy to eighty percent subscribed. And so I think you'd just proceed if the funding was still available, right?
So what Logan, the rep for the town from MCCAC, said was that he can't tell us the number, but what he can say is that a lot of towns are waiting for RFPs to come back. And he knows that to be true because he's had an interview with each and every one of them, because that's his job, that's what they do. So you fill out the expression of interest, MCC gets in touch with you within a couple of days, you have a meeting, and then, so they have kind of got a notebook of what is all in the queue. He can't tell us the numbers, but he knows that there are a lot of municipalities waiting for RFPs to come back. So, you know, that's the, the long, drawn-out process. You know, if you have to go to an RFP, then you're talking weeks. You know, you have to get an engineering stamped letter that the roof is good, so that's a week. And so we don't know when these RFPs for these other municipalities are coming back, we just know that it is happening. Now, obviously, I don't think anybody expects an answer here tonight, but what I would ask, in my experience, is that council pass a motion to have administration go through with the application process at least, so that you can do what you can to guarantee that you will have a choice to make, because if the money's not there, then there's no decision, right? It doesn't cost you anything to put in the application, it's a little bit of time. And there's, there's no obligation on our part, we're, we're dealing in good faith.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much.
Bylaw seventeen ninety-seven. Abe?
So bylaw seventeen ninety-seven is an update to the Economic Development Committee bylaw. And this is original, the original Economic Development Committee bylaw was sixteen fifty-three, and so it's updating that bylaw. And that is the original bylaw that was passed when council previously approved the Economic Development Committee back in 2017. A couple of changes to the bylaw. One, the committee needed some kind of definition of quorum. Previously, there was no definition of quorum, and so in this bylaw, that will be proposing that quorum is five. We're also proposing that the committee membership go from ten members to eight members. It is, has been a little difficult at times to, to actually have a meeting with all those ten people and to gather, gather a quorum, and so recommending shrinking that size of that committee. And also, reduction in the maximum number of members from outside the town of Clare's Home from three to two. There's also a couple of minor kind of procedural changes. If you look in Part Five, some tidying up there of some processes, five C, striking five C, all minutes, resolutions, and policies of the committee shall be entered in the books and be kept, for the purpose, for that purpose in the books shall be signed by the chair of the, or the acting chair. We feel that's actually contained in D, copy of all minutes, resolutions, and policies shall be given, shall be filed with the town records. And so a little redundancy there. And lastly, replacing, for administrative purposes, replacing in Part Eight, the Economic Development Officer is specifically the administrative lead to the committee. We're recommending changing that, thanks, Scott, we're recommending changing that to Economic Development Officer or designate. In that way, there are other administrators that help on that committee from time to time, and so that designate captures any staff member who might, or position member who might be doing the administrative, be the administrative lead for that committee. So this bylaw did, was reviewed by the Economic Development Committee, and the EDC recommended that it come to council for first reading.
Counselor Meister.
I'll make motion for first reading.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to give bylaw number one seven nine seven, the Economic Development Committee bylaw, first reading.
All in favor? Approved. Okay, six point eight point two, Tax Installment Payment Plan bylaw. Abe?
Yeah, so another bylaw amendment update, and we have Corporate Services here who's going to, our Corporate Services Director is going to review that change, bylaw change with council.
This is a pretty straightforward bylaw change. We were reviewing some documentation that we're using for when people are enrolling in the program, and it didn't align with the schedules that were in the current bylaw. So that was kind of step one, and as I got, looking into it, it became a bigger job. So within that, I reviewed the bylaw with Lisa, the tax clerk, and determined that there was a couple items that needed cleaning up within the bylaw, particularly, we took one clause out altogether, I think it was two point four. It just didn't make sense with current practices and what we're doing right now. So it didn't align with, with the, the current tip payment processes. And then we just updated all of the forms to be more current and attached the schedules to the new bylaw. And the reason we decided to go ahead and create a new tip bylaw was just, the original bylaw had already been amended, so it just made sense to, to clean it up and start fresh. So that would be bylaw seventeen ninety-eight is the new one. So administration is just looking for all three readings of the tip bylaw this evening.
Questions? Counselor Kettles?
Is there, I mean, we shouldn't give all three readings unless there's a reason to do so, is the timing such that we need to push this through that quickly, or, I don't know, just wondering what the reason for having all three?
My only reasoning, I guess, is we had, we are active in the tip program right now, we have had people have applied for the program, obviously, so it's in place, and we just want to ensure that the documentation that people have been signing aligns with the bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? Counselor Kettler?
I'll make first motion.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettler to give bylaw number one seven nine eight, the Tax Installment Payment Plan bylaw, first reading.
All in favor? Approved. Counselor Zimmer?
I'll give bylaw seventeen ninety-eight its second reading.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to give bylaw number one seven nine eight, the Tax Installment Payment Plan bylaw, second reading.
All in favor? Approved. A motion to...
For unanimous consent.
Unanimous consent, thank you. Counselor Kettles? Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles for unanimous consent to give bylaw number one seven nine eight, the Tax Installment Payment Plan bylaw, third and final reading at the same meeting.
All in favor? Third, Counselor Carlson, question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to give bylaw number one seven nine eight, the Tax Installment Payment Plan bylaw, third and final reading.
All in favor? Moving on, other, thank you, Jen, other government correspondents, Alberta municipalities. Abe?
So we talked about this at the last meeting, council. This is correspondence from Alberta municipalities for the President's Summit, which takes place on March fifth. That comes before the spr- That comes before the spring municipal leaders caucus, which is on the sixth and seventh. And we have, we did get a motion from council at the last meeting to send Mayor Schlossberger and Counselor Meister to the event. We have signed them up for the, the summit, the President's Summit. And this was the piece that was going to focus on civility in local government, if you recall. And so, there's a whole day of civility and municipal leadership, including promoting a civil social media landscape, harassment in council chambers and the workplace, and ways to look after yourselves and others is the way they've framed it on their correspondence here.
Thank you. Six point C, local correspondence. Six point C, point one, Abe?
So, the town banks with the Bank of Montreal. And we recently received notice that they would be closing their office in town here on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. A little bit of information about the new branch location, that'll be at the West Lethbridge Highlands Branch. That's where the banking, the, all the files will be transferred to and the home base, I guess, the new home base for all of the residents and businesses in Clare's Home who bank with BMO will be, home branch will be in, in West Lethbridge. We did have a call with BMO, the mayor and our Corporate Services Director, myself, with BMO regional, regional managers last week, just to talk about, voice our concerns and disappointment with the closing of the branch and advocate for the community a little bit. A lot of our, I think a lot of the clientele would prefer to have a, I think, a lot of the banking will go to most likely phone banking and internet banking as a result of this, if, if they choose to stay. I think people would prefer to have the in-person service in town. And so, we did voice that concern, particularly for our operations, it is concerning. And there may be some options from our perspective where we can continue with BMO. It is a huge undertaking to switch banking institutions. So we will be administratively, we'll be connecting with BMO officials to see how we might manage to, to stay with them, stay as a client, and if it'll work out for us. But we will have to let council know how those conversations go in the future, so.
Questions? Discussion? Counselor Kettles?
I'll, I'll just make a note saying that it's nice to support those who support us. And so, understandably difficult to change institution. I thank administration for keeping all options on the table.
Thank you, Abe. Six point C, point two, Old Man Regional Services Commission. Abe?
So, the town of Clare's Home is a member of Old Man River Regional Services Commission. They provide planning for us. They also have subdivision development appeal boards, assessment review board services that we use with them as well. That's in addition to our, our regular memberships. And one of the responsibilities we have as a town belonging to those boards, specifically the subdivision and development appeal board, is that we are supposed to keep trained a member in the community who can sit on a region, on that regional board and oversee different hearings when they come up. And so, previously, we had a member who is not wishing to continue, Mike McAlonan. And so, ORSC has asked that council just receives his resignation from the committee. And so, we'd be looking for a motion from, from council for that. And we will begin recruiting for a new member for that board.
Thank you. Questions, concerns, discussion? Counselor Kettles?
Please get someone very qualified, because I'm on this list and I've never done one, so I don't want to be the lone man.
Excuse me, sir, I'm reading this letter. Rod Kettles' training is valid, so you've had training, so you're the most qualified, so congratulations and enjoy your meeting.
Okay? Question? Oh, Counselor Ross, question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to accept the resignation of Mike McAlonan from the Shinnix subdivision and development appeal board.
All in favor? Approved. Six point C, point three, twenty twenty-five haunted house request. Abe?
So, there is a community haunted house every year, and there's a request here for the sixth annual haunted house. They're requesting for the town to contribute to the rental of the north hall, which the town and council traditionally normally does. The haunted house raises money for local charities and usually collects donations and, and raises proceeds. And so, the contribution of the rental fees for the building are a big, one less cost, I guess, that they have to pay. And so, we do have a request here from Lori Rondo to hold the haunted house over the Halloween period. However, normally, we get this through the dollar store with more. So, I'd, I'd like to recommend to council that we just have a bit of, administration gets a chance to clarify who's actually doing the haunted house this year. And maybe just put a pause on this one for now, and we can report back. If that's acceptable? Or just direct, direct administration to?
I kind of have a motion, just that I need somebody to make it, and then I can read it.
I'll make that motion. Counselor Zimmer?
What I have is moved by Counselor Zimmer to direct administration to get clarity on the organization of the sixth annual Halloween haunted house and to bring the information back to council at a future meeting.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Approved. Six point C, point four, West Meadow School Council request. Abe?
So, the school council is embarking on an initiative called the WOW Initiative, where they recognize students for contributions to the school community. Basically, a recognition event for, for students who are excelling. And this is a fairly new, a fairly new initiative for them. And they are looking for contributions from local businesses and organizations for either a swag bag, to donate a swag bag to, that the students might win, or financial contributions so they can go out and purchase an award or something, something like that for the students who are nominated to this WOW recognition initiative. In addition, they are inviting a member, either the mayor or a member of council to be at their next school council meeting, which is March third at eight PM. So two, two requests here.
Thank you, Abe. Questions? Discussion? Counselor Cutler?
Thank you, Mayor Schlossberger. Do we have swag? Like, do we not have some, like sunglasses or some stuff laying around or whatever?
We've got some nice little trinkets.
Right.
Yep.
Not coffee mugs.
What's that?
Not coffee mugs. I don't think the kids want coffee.
We'll make it age appropriate.
We'll make it age appropriate, perfect. I, I knew, I knew administration would have that under control. I mean, I, I'm okay with, I don't know how many bags are looking for or whatever, I don't know what the extent is. But I think partnering with them and having that support from the town would be good. So I will make that motion to support the swag bag.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Cutler? Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to support West Meadow Elementary Schools' WOW initiative with a donation of town swag as necessary.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision?
Sorry.
Oh. Oh. Yes, I am. I, I, I've been invited to be a part of their board. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
You should probably have a motion for that.
Okay?
Counselor Schlossberger to Abe. I apologize for that. I make a motion for Mayor Schlossberger to attend the WOW ceremony.
Thank you. Question?
Are we looking for an appointment to the?
That's not, that's not what that is, though. It's to attend the meeting. Yeah, it's not just the meeting.
So I think the mayor's indicated that he's been asked to be, actually be on the board. So, if council's in favor, just approving him to actually be on the board would probably be more appropriate rather than just attending the meeting. If you want, uh...
Should we have two motions?
Well, we have, well, I think as long as you're, there's a motion for you to be a member of their board, that's good enough. We don't really need to approve you attending a meeting.
Okay. Made that motion? Counselor Zimmer?
It's fine.
And if you wanted to, if council actually wanted to talk about this as a separate item, appointment to the board, we could bring it back at another meeting as well, if that's desired. We don't have to have that motion today.
Okay. Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to approve Mayor Schlossberger being a member of West Meadow Elementary Schools' school council.
Questions, concerns? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, moving on. Six point D, request for decision. Assistant lifeguard position. Abe?
So, administration is looking for approval of an assistant lifeguard position this evening. This does not have a budgetary impact. But if, if council approves it, it'll be used to, uh, the position will be used in situations when we can't actually staff or get, find the staffing for our, for our swimming schedule. And so, the assistant lifeguard position is a position we haven't previously had. We have a junior lifeguard and a senior lifeguard. And so, some members of council have been getting questions about why the town doesn't hire fifteen-year-olds. We would propose that this assistant lifeguard position would be filled by, could be filled by children who are fifteen. And there's less responsibility for an assistant lifeguard as, than there would be for a junior lifeguard. So traditionally, we haven't hired fifteen-year-olds because it's not a recommendation by the Life Savings Society. And we didn't have the, the job structure or the position structure to actually hire fifteen-year-olds. And so, by creating this position again and giving them less responsibilities on deck and for, for lifeguarding, we feel comfortable creating this position. There'd be more clerical work involved with this as well, so a lot of cashiering, customer service behind the front desk. And again, some assistance on the deck, but they would be under direct supervision of junior and, and senior lifeguards. They would ultimately be the responsible parties there. So this would give us a bit more flexibility, as I said earlier, scheduling flexibility. Sometimes it is difficult to find the amount of staffing that we need. And so, we can't maybe have as many people in, there's not enough supervision on deck. We can't have as many patrons in the pool. This will allow us to do that. We are suggesting that the wage match that of the cashier, which is an existing position in the collective agreement, which is seventeen fifty-seven an hour. Any questions from council on that?
Counselor Cutler?
So, in regards to union processes and that kind of stuff, we want to pay them like a cashier, we give them responsibility of a junior lifeguard?
Well, not the same responsibilities as a junior lifeguard. There would be less, like I said, less on deck. And there, there's a ratio that the Life Savings Society has to have to match senior and junior lifeguards. And the assistant lifeguard would never be able to exceed that ratio of how many actual certified guards we have compared to the assistant lifeguard.
Yeah, it's just when I was reading, I was just more worried about if they're on the deck acting as a assistant to the lifeguard.
Yeah.
Does that qualify the cashier wage? I, I, that's all I was concerned about was if we label them as cashiers and they're on the deck performing assistant lifeguard duties, that's cool, the union stuff and that kind of.
Oh, in the union context? Well, I think that, uh, so we've ran it by the Recreation Department and the coordinator down there. They're good with it. So if the staffing is, the union, we'd have to present this position to them. Whether or not they incorporate this position into the union, don't know.
Yeah, my, my only question, we haven't had a cashier for years, so can we not just rename the classification to assistant lifeguard instead of cashier?
Potentially.
Or whatever, that was just my question.
And basically scrub the cashier from the books?
Yeah. Well, just because we start here and we start hiring assistant lifeguards, well then, people, well, if I'm being called assistant lifeguard, why aren't I being paid like a assistant? That's my only concern. And I have one more question.
Okay.
Are we just putting one position out there, or are we going to fill this with like three casual kids that can fill in?
I, I, I don't know, but I, I suspect that we would want a few.
Right, so as an opportunity, it just says one position, so I was just wondering.
Right. Maybe just, maybe just a wording thing?
Yeah.
So just like junior lifeguard, we have a number that we call to fill our scheduling?
Right.
I, I believe we would try to do the same thing here.
That would be recommended, so that's good.
Any other questions, concerns?
Just for clarification for me, and it might be just how I'm reading it. So having this assistant, when it says in that one, two, three, fourth paragraph, they would be replacing a junior lifeguard on deck. That just means you're not pulling a junior lifeguard off deck to be doing assistant stuff? You're not actually replacing?
No, there'd still be a senior, the junior, and there'd be the third.
Yeah, so I, and again, it's, uh, where a junior lifeguard normally would be scheduled, right? Sometimes we do have problems actually calling in and scheduling and getting enough staff.
Okay, perfect, that's. So, so instead of replacing maybe supplement or something?
Yeah.
Maybe some wordsmithing?
We've got some wording challenges with this RFD.
So it's saying cost and source of funding can come out of the operating budget, so it's allotted in there already for this position?
That's correct, the staffing budget, yes, is, is already in place. And we, but in, in theory, what you're doing here is you're actually saving a little bit of money because you would be paying a assistant lifeguard less than you would a junior lifeguard.
Oh, okay, that's good.
I was in favor of this because every community in Southern Alberta has trouble getting lifeguards, period. Junior or senior. This gets them involved, and they can proceed. This gets them involved and they can proceed to become lifeguards.
On that is, believe it or not, a former pool rat in Bow Island who spent the summers there. A program like this was involved down there all the time. And that was the natural progression was, once you, well, what's now the National Lifeguard Award, Bronze Cross, Bronze Medalion back then. All of those kids ran through that program, became part-time employees, and the pool was never short of staff, simply because you could bring those kids up through the program. And 15-year-old kids are great with doing swimming lessons with five-year-old kids and the involvement that it gets, it actually creates a good community down there, so.
Can we have motion, please? Counselor Carlson?
So it'd be moved by Counselor Carlson to approve the assistant lifeguard job description for the town of Clarestown.
All in favor? Approved. Next, six point D, point two, arena score clock, letter of support.
I make motion to write a letter of support.
Coke just didn't want to give us one anymore?
Nope. So we are looking to apply with the Community Foundation of Lethbridge, the Community Priorities Fund. Actually, Clarestown Minor Hockey is going to be applying or assisting with the application for a new score clock. That's what we're looking to purchase, fourteen thousand eighty-six dollars plus GST. Yeah, just looking for a letter of support from council to, yeah, to support the application.
Counselor Cutler?
Now, I know it says the Community Foundation grant, we don't know what, is that 50% of the cost of the clock?
I believe we're applying for the full, that is the full cost, we're applying for the full cost.
Oh, okay.
I think generally what they'll do is they can provide you for a full project. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
Counselor Cutler?
I'll make a motion to write a letter of support for the application.
Question?
Sorry, my computer decided to restart. So moved by Counselor Cutler to direct administration to write a letter of support towards Clarestown Minor Hockey's application to the Community Foundation of Lethbridge in Southwest Alberta for the Community Priorities Fund for a new score clock at the arena.
All in favor? Approved. It'll use part of that.
Oh, I see.
Okay, six point D, point three, Skate Park Association grand opening celebration.
So the Skate Park Association is looking to do a grand opening celebration on June 21st, 2025. Event. And have put in a request to use the park for the grand opening and to have a beer gardens.
Questions? Concerns? Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for the use of the skate park.
Counselor Meister? Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to approve the use of the skate park for the grand opening celebrations and approve the responsible sale and consumption of liquor at the skate park on June 21st, 2025, between 11:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. For the, on the condition that the application, an application to the Alberta Liquor Gaming and Cannabis has been approved and is displayed at the event.
All in favor? Approved. Six point D, point four, Range Gravel Experience, July 19th, 2025.
So we normally bring RFDs to council after, the week after the delegation, the meeting after the delegation. We've had this one several times, so we hope it's okay, just we've had this event several times in the past, so we're just requesting some direction from council, looking for some motions regarding the range event. So to allocate some bylaw enforcement assistance to the event during the rollout is traditionally when we have assisted with that, just kind of directing, directing the riders through the town. Permission to stage the, stage the event at Centennial, providing showers for riders for a $5 fee. And in the past, we have reserved tree sites for volunteers, tree, tree campsite, sorry, for volunteers. And so looking for that, eight, eight tree sites to be reserved for volunteers. And again, we're looking for a motion for the Skate Park Association to host a beer gardens during the event.
Counselor Cutler?
During his presentation, he made the comment of if the skate park wanted to do a beer gardens, so have they confirmed that they're doing the beer gardens?
I believe they have. I know they were on a conference call, or they were at least invited to a conference call, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure they're interested.
I was just wondering if we can take the Skate Park Association out and just put a beer gardens by whoever, like, you know what I, but does it have to say the Skate Park Association?
I think it does have to say, like, we probably have to indicate what group. However, if they're not interested, we can just bring it, we'll confirm with them.
And then that's fine.
Just bring it back if we get somebody else who's interested.
Any other questions, concerns?
We have bylaw enforcement there by then?
I believe so. Yeah. And if not, we'll make, we will make arrangements available.
Perfect. He will do it.
Motion one?
All right, I will move to allow bylaw enforcement to assist.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to allow town of Clarestown bylaw enforcement to assist the Range Gravel Experience rollout from 9:00 till 9:30 a.m. at 8th Street West and Highway 520 on July 19th, 2025.
All in favor? Approved. Counselor Cutler on motion two. Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to stage the Range Gravel Experience at Centennial Park Campground on July 19th, 2025.
All in favor? Approved.
A motion for the use of the showers for a $5 fee.
Counselor Meister? Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to provide showers for the Range Gravel Experience riders at Centennial Park Campground for a $5 fee on July 19th, 2025.
All in favor? Approved.
I can move the tree sites.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettle to reserve eight tree sites for volunteers and to reserve campsites for the Range Gravel Experience event up until May 31st, 2025.
Motion for the Skate Park Association?
Oh, we should probably vote on this one.
Oh, all in favor?
Should that not be July's date?
No, that's just keeping the reservations open until May 31st.
Then they have to make the reservation.
Next motion. Counsel, to permit Clarestown Skate Park Association to host the beer gardens. Motion? Counselor Carlson, question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to permit the Clarestown Skate Park Association to host a beer gardens in the park from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on July 19th, 2025, and for the town to provide tables and chairs with the understanding that coordination of tables and chairs will not be reliant on public works staff on the weekend.
All in favor? Approved. Six point D, financial report?
This is a financial report ending November 30th of 2024. I've just highlighted a few areas for council. I kept in the municipal tax because of the excess amount that is showing there, just due to the collection of requisitions, which have all been paid out for 2024. General administration revenues, as mentioned before, indicate 70% additional revenues over budget, but this is due to some land sales that will be transferred as part of the year-end, so the actual revenues are above budget by about 3.4% on the actuals. Fire revenues is in excess of 77%, and this is up an additional 36% since the October 31st financial report. So fees for fire services are invoiced, obviously, on emergency calls that are responded to, and this revenue source is fairly difficult to estimate, its call volumes are unpredictable and can fluctuate throughout, throughout the year and from year to year. So any surplus or deficit that does show up within this department is transferred to or from the reserves at the end of each fiscal year. So however that balances out will be adjusted with transfers. Revenues received in roads, streets, and walks has increased, and this is primarily due to the sale of some crushed asphalt from the stockpile that the Public Works has north of town. And revenues in water, sewer, garbage, and recycling are on par for this time of year, although, well, there is another December billing since this report. I do predict that it will be slightly under by 2% to 3%, though, just based on the averages to date. So, and then upon review of the overall expenditures, obviously, it looks like they're a bit low, but there are some year-end entries to still take place, the largest, of course, being about 1.8 million in amortization, that's a year-end entry. So I'm in the process of doing all of the year-end as we speak, so the auditors should be here sometime in February to do their onsite visit before the December financials or year-end financials are presented to council. And then I have identified Schedule One and Two there, which are on pages three and four, and I can review in a moment. On page two of the financial report is the income statement, so this shows the same information, but instead of being laid out by department, it's just laid out by its function. So just another view for council. Again, I highlighted a couple of items, just with the tax, again, I've mentioned that. Interest rates I highlighted, we're going to be very close if, or pardon me, it'll be close to, well, it's over now, and we have another significant December interest to be accounted for on there. So even though that we've experienced some Bank of Canada interest rate cuts, you know, just with the balances that are being maintained, the town is still doing well with its interest revenues, as well any investment renewals. If the principal's renewed, often the interest is retained, so that also earns some revenue there. Additional revenues have also been earned in penalties that are applied to outstanding taxes and utilities, and there's still one more utility penalty levy to be issued in December. And the tax penalty for December 31st gets recorded in the 2025, in January 1 of 2025. Overall rental revenues are below the anticipated budget for this time of year. There is still some invoicing to be completed within the December month, and it will be backdated to December, it won't fall into 2025. Swimming and ice time, swimming is a little bit lower, ice time is fairly consistent with previous years, but we may need to review the budget a bit just to see where we're sitting when we look at final budget and make sure we're aligning a little bit better there. The other revenue line includes revenues that are earned from services like fire service fees, which we reviewed on the income statement on the prior report. Again, amortization is an annual entry that will be completed, and overall expenditures, you know, are fairly, looking fairly good for this time of year. I will be bringing forward a surplus or deficit report in February, just to align with the year-end financials for council. The schedules, Schedule One is the Economic Development Function, and this is just, I just thought these were two good departments to bring forward. The budget is for fees received through the year for various projects, and none have been coded to date, so these would be maybe some donations that were made from, within the community would create that revenue. And then, of course, we've received all of the government transfers for operating. It's just with, I don't know why it's showing, oh, sorry, the 94% is the total of the total budget owing, so it's a bit confusing there. And then under the expenditures, the revenues, or pardon me, there's two pay periods remaining in this, under the salaries, wages, and benefits, so, and all the burdened rates are associated with that. It does look a bit low, and I think this is just how the allocations are made within payroll, so I'll be reviewing that also again as part of the year-end, just to make sure that wages are being allocated to the correct departments. And the materials, goods, and supplies are for costs primarily related to program costs for the SILP grant, advertising, communications, and other community events that are held through the Economic Development Department. And on the last schedule there, Schedule Two, this is for land use planning and zoning. So these are fees. Revenue consists of things like compliance requests and area structure plan applications that come through. Licensing and permit revenues are received from building permits and development application fees, and as you can see, it's over by 10% in revenue. This, similarly to the fire department, is a bit unpredictable because you don't know what developments, so you're averaging it on, you know, over a period of years, but obviously the department has been very busy because that revenue shows that there's activity happening and applications being made and permits being approved or applied for. Again, the salaries and wages are sitting there with a couple more burdened rates, with a couple more pay periods to happen. And then the contract and general services expenditures, so this would contain annual fees to ORSC, land survey fees, subdivision costs, some of the GIS services, any engineering that would be related to the Development Department, and some permit and inspection fees that, that may happen, but some of that is offset again by the revenues within the permits and application fees that we receive. So overall, the, both departments are doing well.
Questions? Concerns? Counselor Zimmer?
No, I was just going to make a motion to accept the consolidated statement as presented for November 30th.
Okay. I just wanted to say I appreciate Jen being here.
Thank you.
The explanations are very worthy and appreciated and makes me feel good about how it's being handled. Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to accept the consolidated statement of operations for the month ended November 30th, 2024 as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Six point F. Information brief, Live Barn video at the arena.
So just a little bit of an update that we have connected with Live Barn, which is a, an arena broadcasting service, and they are going to be broadcasting different events, sporting events at the, at the arena for the 2025-2026 season. They are in many rinks throughout Canada, and even in the region here, they're in some rinks north and south of us, very close. Uh, and, uh, even in the region here, they're in some rinks, uh, north and south of us, very close. Uh, and so I think that our recreation, um, manager kind of got word from a, a local community member about this possibility and reached out and, and has arranged to have them, basically broadcast the events. And it allows people to, who subscribe, uh, to the event, uh, maybe family members or friends, subscribe to the service, rather, um, uh, to see, see the action that's happening on the ice without attending. Um, and, uh, no cost to the community to have it installed. Um, and there can even be a bit of, uh, kickback, financial kickback, uh, to the community for getting subscribers, uh, in. And so the town gets a little bit of the kickback there. So no conflict with the, uh, Junior A, uh, Thunders team, uh, with doing this. And so just an information brief that that's a service that's, uh, going to be happening. Going to be happening at the rink soon.
Questions, concerns? Thank you for information.
So, I'm sorry, it looks like it started the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six season.
Next. Six point G. CAO report. Questions, discussion? Anything you want to add, Abe?
Uh, just a couple of things, uh, council. Um, there is a pretty big change happening right now, uh, legislatively to our information, uh, to our FOIP legislation. Um, and, and so just wanted to bring that up, that there is new legislation in place provincially that will replace FOIP. FOIP was, um, began, and I believe it's nineteen ninety-five, and it underwent, uh, an update around twenty-ten or twenty-eleven, but has been a fairly, uh, for lack of a better word, stagnant, uh, legislation. Not a lot of changes to it. And so FOIP oversees public institutions and how they manage information, how they disclose information, and protect people's privacy. And so there are some changes coming provincially. It's basically going to overhaul FOIP altogether. Uh, we don't know a lot of, uh, what that's going to look like i- in real life or real time. Uh, but there will be some webinars coming up, and so we will keep council updated, um, on, on that, on those changes when we know more, when the, uh, regulations come through. So, uh, it's pretty significant, uh, pretty significant change. So we will keep you informed. Additionally, uh, I just wanted to highlight some of the development, uh, development numbers, uh, for the year. We've got some year-end development numbers. Um, and this was, uh, the town of Clarestown's biggest year in terms of, uh, approved, uh, development permits. Uh, residential is right on par with, uh, twenty twenty-three at about eight-point-six million. Um, but where we, uh, jumped ahead of, uh, twenty twenty-three's, uh, was with the industrial, uh, development, uh, four-point-eight-six million in approved industrial development. So total of, uh, fourteen-point-nine million, um, in approved, uh, development in town. Uh, housing starts stats there as well. Twenty twenty-three, you see that, um, is up, looks like about eighty-five. Uh, that includes the approved, um, apartment building over across from the fire hall, which, uh, hasn't, hasn't started yet, but that's why that number is way up there. So that also includes, um, on the east side of town, where there's been some townhouses, a bit more in Harvest Square as well. Uh, twenty twenty-four is eighteen or nineteen, uh, housing starts. Um, any other questions, uh, any highlights, uh, questions from council, from any of the other reports?
I think I really liked, and I enjoyed seeing the picture of the community center and the shape that it's in right now. And it was also nice to know that our fire truck has been used and performed perfectly.
Yeah, I, I had to do a double take at that picture. I was like, where the heck is that? Oh, right. Yeah. Yeah.
Other questions, concerns? Okay. Six point H. Council Committee Report. Any additions, questions? Concerns? Council Resolution Status. Questions, concerns? Information Items, Federation of Canadian Municipalities. Any question on the information item? Can I have a motion to accept the information items? Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to adopt the information items as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Counselor Cutler, motion to go in camera. Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to go in camera at eight-thirty-seven PM for the following items. Intergovernmental Relations, FOIP Section twenty-one, A and B.
All in favor?